That post and set the timer for long enough for people to get in. So it would be.
Similar to what we're doing here?
Yeah, it would be exactly what that budget.
Okay.
For me, it would be.
Okay, alright, thank you. Hi, uh. How do we want to do this today? Do you want to just go down the line today or is there anything that? I'm asking because there are some other things like the bids for golf cart paths. And some other things that need to be considered before we. Get to the tax rate.
Do you want us to go with them or?
Okay. DMV fee changes. So, um, Jenna couldn't be here, she's doing a tax sale. But she brought this to me and said that, uh, these are the fee changes that we are required to fill out every year. However, county road bridge fee may not exceed ten dollars. We are at ten dollars. Child safety fee, revenue must be used for safety crossing guard services. Remaining funds may be used for programs to enhance child safety. We don't do anything with school crossing guards, so, um, I don't see where we can make any changes.
No, it's not the maximum, we don't lose child safety fee.
Alright, so I would entertain a motion.
I would motion we approve the DMV changes, golf cart changes.
Thank you.
Propose.
All in favor? Alright, court considering local agreement for E nine one one, that's a trade thing, he's handling it, that doesn't need to come before us. I didn't realize that. Court consider agreement with Yamaha for the lease of golf carts. So, um.
County attorney in the city is doing the leasing.
Leasing of?
Golf carts. Says it right there in there.
Oh.
Yeah, there's a few things that need to be fixed in there probably, but, uh, yeah, so the. So this is the, uh, city requires.
What does that mean?
Yes, yeah.
That's a pretty. Yeah.
So my understanding is our lease, current lease agreement expires at the end of August or is it September?
Yes and no. Right now, we have kind of mixed, uh, messages. PNC, the bank, Angela says last payment is due in August. Easy Go says last payment is due in October, October fourteenth. So the Easy Go man is checking.
Payments and it was in August, so sixteen.
It's all when they were, it's all when they were delivered.
In August.
Okay.
It's all when they were delivered.
Right?
So that's the sixty-four thousand dollar question, when were they delivered?
Hmm, but wouldn't it go by about the first payment?
That's what I was thinking, that's.
Yeah, so we don't, actually now we're triple checking that.
Yeah.
So that's moving along as, and the way it will work, uh, with y'all's permission is the Yamaha group will come in with sixteen carts. We're at twelve now. And the rationale was we need more to make more money because we definitely have the business to do that. They would be delivered, the tentative date is October first. At that time, the way it works in this industry is they deliver their carts, but they pick up the other carts and take them back to the competitor. Exactly. And apparently that's what they do in this business. So, and the good news there is it saves on freight.
Sure.
They do that, that's why. So, uh, all is moving along as smoothly as I guess it could. It's my first rodeo with this, so so far it's not killing me, but it's definitely, you got a a lot of phone calls, a lot of text messages back and forth and emails. But it's gonna be good. These old carts that they have, they've served their purpose. Uh, business is good, real good. And more will get rented out, make more money. There, it's a sixty-month plus one, so after five years, the county owns them. Turn around and make a straight profit or sell them.
Yeah.
And there's always a resale. They're all, they buy them just as soon as you want to sell them.
And we've had some issues with the gas ones that are going to electric.
No, 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 we're still all like, we're still all gas.
The, these new ones will be all electric though?
No, no, they're all gas. Actually, yeah, the price, the price difference is tremendous.
Gotcha, okay.
So, uh, we're going with bare bones, uh, they're even gonna be white. They need just plain Jane carts. But they're Yamaha, which is a good brand. They make their own motors. They should be more reliable. The Easy Go, uh, the brand we have is a tech something or the other that they got five years ago, and they're, they're kind of road hard and a bit of wet. So we're nursing those until we can. And unfortunately, some of them are in a bad way that will need to get repaired before they're either on site or they go back to Easy Go headquarters. As part of the lease agreements, they got to be returned in working order. But they're all gas.
Right, okay. And then you're getting sixteen, we approved that last year, built sixteen instead of twelve.
Yes.
Which we have, thanks to you guys, we have the space to talk.
Thank you. There's a motion that we accept the agreement with Yamaha for the lease of golf carts, sixteen golf carts. For our Spur County Golf Course, uh, after that, the county attorney has looked over the lease and agrees that it complies with county law and that give you the power to sign.
All in favor? Thank you. Court to discuss overpayment of sales tax.
That seems.
Again. So, uh, got a letter that says that we have been overpaid in local sales and use tax in the amount of sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty cents. We are currently in a repayment of yeah, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents that the comptroller paid us previously. That apparently we didn't get. So we have some options, full reimbursement by one-time ACH deposit or check in that amount. Apply all monthly collections to the overpaid amount and the other amount has been repaid. Or enter into a forty-two month payback agreement where an additional monthly deduction of fifteen hundred and seventeen will be deducted for forty-one months. With final deduction of fifteen thirty-two eighty.
Highlight number three.
Bill.
Monthly payback?
Yes, sir.
That good.
All in favor? Alright, court to discuss HB fifteen twenty-two and changes that need to be made. This one might take just a few minutes. Take a little longer on this. Um, in government code, section five fifty-one point oh four three, to require the notice of a meeting of governmental body to be posted in a public place accessible at all times for at least three business days, rather than seventy-two hours before the scheduled meeting day, meeting day, meeting date and time. This could go all kinds of different ways. We can just change the date that we set or post the agenda, or we can change the date of our meetings or. Montgomery County, they're leaving their court dates on Tuesdays for the remainder of the year because they've already been set. Uh, however, come January, they're moving their court dates to Thursdays, posting on Friday unless there's a holiday, then they'll post on Thursdays. If we just change the date that we post, we would post on Wednesday instead of on Friday. It would give a full three days' notice, Thursday, Friday, Monday. Of course, all the documents are already there, still there, have been there and can be accessed by, accessed by anybody as soon as the agenda is posted. So, uh, that's gonna remain the same. But we just need to determine how we're gonna move forward. Do you want to change the dates of our meetings or do you want to just change the posting date?
Change the posting date.
Okay. It's left.
If you do it by ten o'clock on Thursday, wouldn't it be?
It's not by hours, it's by days.
Yeah, it has to be three, that Thursday.
Thursday, Friday, Monday.
Tuesday.
By ten o'clock, then that's not on Friday.
At ten o'clock doesn't matter.
No.
On Tuesday.
Right.
That's pitiful.
Yes.
That's a business day.
Not a full business day.
No, okay. So you're, you're saying it has to be full business day regardless of.
Five o'clock on Wednesday.
Then you have all day Thursday, all day Friday, and all day Monday.
Yeah. Says, uh, in the body. The notice of a meeting of a governmental body must be posted into place readily accessible to the general public at all times for at least, and this is the change, three businesses, three business days. And it marks out seventy-two hours before the scheduled date instead of time of the meeting.
I agree.
But they didn't at that time anyway.
Wow. Well, that's fine. Changes the day.
Change it to posting on Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Alright, and I will send that out to everybody, so we will need to have everything in by Monday.
And you're gonna post it Wednesday by five or Wednesday?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to make ten, but that's not always gonna happen, so. And I said Monday, we'll make it Tuesday by noon. For anything that needs to be on the agenda.
Turn in Tuesday morning. And the vote, offer? Can, uh, on that, accounts payable?
Accounts payable.
Okay, 'cause we run the checks on Thursday night, or Thursday afternoon, and then we run another on Monday morning, usually before court. The packet will be, I mean, it's gonna be on every agenda.
Right.
Well, not every agenda, but.
On regular.
The needed agendas, yes. Um, so that won't matter, right?
No, ma'am. That, the, um, line item transfer, budget amendments.
And if I have certified revenues.
Certified revenues and account payable are exceptions. Because I know that you're still running those and getting those.
Yeah. Okay, no worries, thank you.
All in favor? Alright, court consider bids for golf cart paths. We got one bid. Bill, do you remember how much is in that budget before that? It was fifty thousand?
No, I think that's upwards of. Well, in that line, there's ninety.
Ninety, okay. And that, that's right, because we put that much for cart paths and bathrooms and you're choosing to do.
Yeah.
Okay, so one bid from a wall construction company lists all of them. It's twelve locations, fifty-two hundred and twenty-five square feet, and the bid is eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and five dollars.
How much is it, I'm sorry?
Eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and five dollars.
Did you go, did you go, I mean?
That's four foot wide. Or wider. Hopefully wider.
Some are four and some are six. So we've got fifteen by thirty-five, twenty-three by six, eighty by six, six by six, twenty by thirty, twenty-one by four, fifteen by six, and the remainder are six other than, are six foot wide, other than the last one, which is a thirty by fifty. Just one area is four foot, twenty-one by four. Is that a, I don't know what that would be.
Could be around five, seven, and eight hole where it's got all torn up and the water lines were put in.
Could be.
That's, that's the largest area. And there's area right there at number one tee box that right now we have a trip for, pretty good trip hazard that we're trying to slow to avoid accidents. We'd like to slow it to avoid accidents.
It looks like you got the money. I make motion that we allow the wall construction to lay cart paths for Spur County Golf Course.
Okay. Uh, discuss tax rate, take record vote with the general public here. So, um, I sent you all an email yesterday letting you know that there were a few changes in the budget. One of the things that was not in there was zipper payment. I put it on each of your, uh, lease payments because I didn't know where else to put it, but it's budgeted, it's been done, or it needs to be budgeted. Court approved it and, uh, we've got the machine and the contract's been signed, so, um, that was one of the things that I put in there because needed to be in there and I didn't know where else to do it, so, um. The, uh, let me go back to the top. We'll go to this one. Back over here on the, uh, totals, we talked about last time the tax rate was gonna be point six-three-one-seven if everything is included and that was requested. That has not changed with the changes that we made in that. It's still gonna be point six-three-one-seven, uh, generating twenty million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, which covers the twenty million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and ten parts. So now it's one more opportunity to make any changes if you so desire.
Maybe you talk about cutting the, cut them down nine percent.
Yes, sir.
Cutting every request. And it will work for every request except an employee. Because that's a fixed amount. And I just don't. It's like I said, you take them all out, leave them all in, leave my little one all in. Because it's not fair for somebody who's an employee, you know, they should offer to take him out. That's not fair either.
Yeah, nursery's everything, didn't meet this up.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so that's not changed. It's still a million in the budget.
Okay.
This, this is the worksheet that if any of the changes were made, these were the biggest ones out there. The only area I changed on this street, this sheet was that first under A, twenty-twenty-six F four. Here, let me make that bigger for you.
Getting older. I can only squint so much.
And you can't see.
That's gonna run slow. Where's not gonna run at all?
It's getting bigger, you can tell it. So is the hundred and fifty that we talked about for the technical vehicle, is it still in there?
It's still in there.
Okay.
It's, that is, uh, under four oh nine, under, um, the, uh, what is that?
Capital outlay.
Capital outlay, yes, thank you.
Because the reason I'm bringing that up is until we know what the city does, we may or may not.
Sure.
Need that.
That's true.
But I don't, I don't know what their feelings are.
Right. Ms. Summers, you had a series of questions for me yesterday and now.
On that specific topic, this is what the city, I would say, popped off. If they do not approve their amount and the county does, and they suggest that the county puts that money into their own reserve fund, and I am completely against that. My suggestion is a hundred and fifty thousand from the commissioners is not added to the budget. It's used out of Fund twenty-nine if and when it's needed. Because you're gonna add a hundred and fifty thousand, you're gonna raise the tax rate for something that you're not even sure the city's council's gonna approve. Their next regular meeting is September the first, unless they have it on an agenda before then, which doesn't matter as of today's court date because you're voting on proposed tax rate today. So I don't think it should be in, added to the budget at all. The tax rate needs to go back to what it was before, six-three-one-seven. And a hundred and fifty thousand needs to be out of Fund twenty-nine.
I thought you were against Fund twenty-nine to begin with.
Well, I'm more for Fund twenty-nine than raising my property taxes. And as far as Fund twenty-nine and any pilot payments that come into the county, that's income to the county, that is taxpayers' money. So therefore, anything that goes out of Fund twenty-nine is taxpayers' money. But to raise the tax rate to day for something that you're not even sure that's gonna happen at the city should not be done.
So Angela Shawne asked where those funds would go if, uh, the city decided not to purchase.
If, if they don't purchase and, and it is budgeted?
Right.
It goes to the reserve, goes to general fund reserve and it's held in there and till it's budgeted, yeah, whatever, just like any other fund, every other line, if you don't spend it all, it goes to the reserve.
Just like what we turn back to.
Right.
You're raising the tax rate to get it.
What, uh, what's the schedule, the date for the schedule, public hearing that we have to meet?
August nineteenth.
Yeah, nineteenth is when we would do that. We have to post it seven days prior, so, um, so we would post it, I would go ahead and post it Monday. No, I'd go ahead and post it this week. That way, there's no doubt that it's at least seven days, so.
And it has to be in the newspaper.
And it has to be in the newspaper. So we would probably post, uh, get it out to the paper tomorrow and get it posted tomorrow.
But there is official form that Jenna has to have. That's why we have to have the record vote, because there's a form that Jenna fills out that she submits to the newspaper that has to be published. And then there is, that same form gets posted here at the courthouse and on our website.
So the public hearing date would be the nineteenth?
Yes, sir.
And that's what we said, tax rate, do the adopt the budget.
Yes, sir.
Set the tax rate, adopt the budget, and ratify the tax rate.
Yes.
But we have to do a record vote of it today?
The record vote on the proposed tax rate is today.
So you need a motion to.
A hundred and fifty thousand. What, your what?
What does that do?
It's less than a big correct, yeah.
Oh my goodness, yeah. Way less than a big.
We've got an actual change calculator here.
Can I say one other thing about the tax rate, please, right quick before? The city last night voted to propose their tax rate. If they said that they could propose that tax rate and then they could later come back and lower it if they wanted to, they just could not go higher than what they proposed. And I think it was their attorney that said that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so it would, instead of six-three-one-seven, it'd be six-two-six-seven. And that's twenty million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and five. And that is twenty million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and ten.
Well, my point is, while we would put it in there, we don't know what state it's gonna do. And I guess, and if they don't do nothing, it goes back to reserve. So we don't know what they're gonna do.
But if they said yes, what are we gonna do? What would they suggest? They said, yeah, we're gonna, the county committed, we're gonna commit also.
I don't know. The reason for the question goes. I don't want to do any, same like they don't want to do any. So, so I'm, I'm just wondering what difference it makes, so it's actually three fourths of a cent, roughly.
Maybe half. Yeah, try it at half.
You know, I, you know, if they approve it, if we don't budget for it.
Three ounces.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, I mean, Ms. Summers is right. We can, if, if we don't set it, if we set it to the six-three-one-seven or whatever, what we agreed to last Tuesday. And we, we put it in there, we have to notify, we have to get it posted today. We can always, in a week from now, we can always go down, but we cannot go back up. So if the city hasn't made up their mind by then, uh, that's, we can, like I said, we can always go down, we cannot go up like it today.
My understanding is they won't meet until the twenty-fifth. They won't have a decision before we meet again.
For the hearing.
Right. And we'll be done after the nineteenth.
And we have to have something adopted by September first.
Right.
Like, that's the legal deadline.
Yeah.
We can't wait. If their meeting's not until September, then.
Right.
They usually have first Monday, September first would be, the first Monday, five-thirty P M.
So it would be too late for us.
And want to leave it in or take it out? And if the city agrees, they can take it out of twenty-nine, which is perfect.
Much as I'm telling you, I'll talk to you.
I have no idea.
Remember this year, I'll, I'll, the majority of that is going towards the EMS station, so about eight, eight hundred thousand.
Out of next year is only three hundred and fifty thousand is budgeted out for the, if we have to pay anything for the.
Planning.
Yeah, on the courthouse thing. One point, what is it? You don't have it up there.
I don't.
It's one, one million, ninety thousand, four forty-five revenue budget to come in, three hundred and fifty thousand budgeted to potentially go out out of Fund twenty-nine in twenty-twenty-six.
What funds are we paying the comptroller back with?
It, um, they are taking it out of the money before they send it, so we're not sending them anything. They're holding it back on our, on our, uh, sales tax that we get paid from them monthly.
Have the, have our sales tax been fluctuating going up and down?
It's been pretty regular, like it's, like we've got two seventy-two, um, for June. So it's been pretty decent. So we haven't really sit, even though they're already taking that payment out, we're not really seeing a huge hit in it, but we've had, uh, an increase in, in sales tax. I mean, if we would have not had to pay that back, we would have more, but you're not seeing a huge hit in there right now. Now, I'm not saying that that's not gonna happen, um, getting closer to the holidays and stuff like that. I, I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen with that. But the sales tax paid thing, we have no control over that because that's what they don't withhold from businesses, or if. Or if businesses don't notify that they've moved from the area or they've closed down or something, they're allocating it out and then they find out later. And so then they have to pull that all back. So there's absolutely nothing we can do about that because that's what the state has paid us too much based on what they received or are going to receive.
So with this, this extra money that we're paying now that they're taking out, what is our total that they're removing from us each month?
It's on the.
Yeah, it's on that letter.
But we already owe 350,000 out.
1500 a month for 41 months and 4100.
It's, I don't remember the amount. It was, I think the total was 36,000 before and then add this like small amount. So less than 40 a month that they're taking, they're clawing back from us.
15, 17, 18.
That's for that amount.
Right.
And then there was already the additional because the other overpayment was higher. It was, um. Yeah, it was significantly higher than what this one is. So it's about, it's about total of little less than 40,000.
The other one we're paying in is 11, um.
11.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
The outstanding balance is 375,961,37.
And that one goes until March or April.
But we don't, we don't see it and we don't pay it back to them. We just receive. And I'll, I'll, I'll pull up Fund 10's on my, on here and I can tell you what.
While she's doing that, the prior year sales tax that Jana calculated was 2,959,323. All right. Well, it's on her sheet.
Yes, that's the information that I had to provide to her. She's a holder.
Yeah, so that's about 246,614 a month average.
Yeah.
Average month. It's going to be different, but sure, it's an average.
And that was the preceding 12 months. So that would have been part of this year and part of last year. Because you have to go, I think, when I did that, when I did that in July, so I would have went from January to June this year and then six months of last year to get that amount.
The previous four quarters, correct?
Yes. Did I say, what did I say? Six months?
You said half of this year and I'm, I'm.
Yeah, but.
I'm a little deeper in that.
Yes. Hold on. It's harder to look this up on my phone than it is on my laptop. So we've been receiving, well, yeah, we just received 279,915 in July for June and June for May, we received 252,898. So we've already received over 1.6 million this year in sales tax.
And that's after they take out that?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. That is with that deduction. So with that withholding.
Not bad. So on track.
We're at 1.3 million from our budgeted 3 million.
On track then?
Yes.
Okay. So how do y'all want to handle that?
I don't think it makes a video in there too.
Doesn't sound like they're going to do it, just from, I mean, if they're angry about it, those that are making the decision are council.
Bill, you're on City Council.
I am. Uh, I don't think, I didn't take angry from anybody at all. It was, it was thoroughly discussed. It was, rightfully so, it was bad timing. So it was tabled and it will be discussed again and potentially again. But that's where we stand. But I don't think anybody was particularly, I didn't, I didn't walk away angry. I don't, I don't think anybody else to do.
You have ample funds in reserve?
We do. Uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call our reserves ample anymore. I fear they're getting too low for what I like.
Approximately how much?
Well, we can't go any lower than 6 billion.
6 million?
Yeah. And we're, we're not there, thank goodness. But we keep, we keep taking it out of there. We're going to get there pretty quickly.
Sure.
Wish we had some. Ms. Summers.
I would like to specifically hear from my commissioner, what his thoughts are on this.
I don't think if we're going to do it, we could take out Fund 29 also. Because we're not going to be able to do anything before they do.
Is that a consensus?
Sounds like it.
I don't like it to me. I'm good with it, typically.
It's not a no. It's just if it goes forward, it'll run like Fund 29.
Well, right.
All right, anything else y'all want to change?
Won't you make a zipper button down here?
All right, so where, where do you want it to be? So like I said, we, I put that in there because no, no other place to put it. Fund or the, not fund, but Precinct 6 has been deactivated. So.
Court loaded to a brim.
Do you do your fixed assets the same way?
Um, in 10, we have the option now to assign to multiple precincts. So I would have it as a zipper assigned to all four precincts. Now, I didn't have that option and so one of the reasons why we kept 6, we kept the things in 6. But since 6 has been dissolved, y'all have all gone out. I'm, to be transparent, I have not had time to work in fixed assets at all.
I just assume that you know what you're going forward with the new system.
Yes, in the new system, I can assign to multiple precincts and I can, it will be tracked that and through all four. Y'all would all see it on your report or when you run it into yours, you would see it up there.
So the chip spreader, the distributor?
Yes, I will have to get a report out of 9. So and send to all of y'all so y'all can say, yes, this is a Precinct 6 item that goes to all four. Just to verify again, to make sure that we have all of the pieces of equipment assigned to the right place. Then it would show up in all four.
Yep, commissioners sometimes that split different things that they do. So you would show that as well. So maybe three, two and three or whatever would buy a piece of equipment.
Yes, yes.
And together.
Showed on there as.
Between those two, okay.
Yes, this, this software allows us a lot more usability and, I mean, it's just, it's a lot better. It just takes a lot to, I mean, it takes a while to get in there and do it. I have to, I haven't, have not worked anything in fixed assets right now because I've been doing trainings and doing budget and all the other stuff. But that is like my next, is to work off the fixed asset once we're done with budget.
Sure, thank you. So now we're at, all right, so 20 million 319,610. It's $5 over, I was mistaken, .6267. At 20 million 319,305. Let me look at something.
There's got the chip spreader up the studio.
Sorry, oh, we did. It's in Precinct 1, yes.
I can pick out some words.
Okay, good. Yeah, so put that .6267 is 20 million 319,605. The budget is 20 million 319,319,610. The budget is $5 over that tax rate of .63, 6267.
So we need to go 6268.
I didn't do the calculation, but that would put us.
It would be 3242, um, that one penny is, is 3,3,242.
So yes, we can go to 62.
I mean, not one penny, but that one.
One.
Point oh oh one.
One thousandths.
Yes.
It's how much?
Uh, 3,242.
Yeah, so that would put us there.
Okay.
0.6268 would be the tax rate.
So you need a motion or you're just going to vote on that tax rate?
We got to read all that.
Not on this today. Today, you have to do a motion for a proposed tax rate and then you have to take a record vote. So each of you are going to have to be on record on what you're voting on. If you're voting for that proposed tax rate or not.
Did you have a formal on that before?
We do, but Jana hasn't.
Jana hasn't.
And Jana's in tax. So I will get with her once court, Melody and I can get with her so she can have to fill out the formal form.
Okay.
Only proposed tax rate of .6268.
And so public hearing for.
Second.
Okay, Sean, I'm getting everybody's record vote.
Yeah.
Wait, the one, the one, make the motion.
Just checking.
Wait, what was Doug's?
Yes, Jeff.
Four.
Four, all four.
And Dan's?
And Dan's four.
And Dan's.
Your proposal, that you better.
That's what I said yesterday.
Better be four.
I was going one, one time, personally, the motion or something. When it comes down to it, we'll vote.
See, I can ask. You never know.
That's when you get the straight.
Sometimes after a little discussion, you might change mine.
Ms. Summers.
I just want to thank y'all for listening. I'm probably the only one that's said anything about this tax rate. I don't know if I've received any emails or phone calls from anybody else, but at this point, I want to.
Thank you for listening to me.
Okay, uh, no certified revenues, non-transferred.
There is a budget amendment.
All right, we'll do a budget amendment.
Um, there's one budget amendment for Harley Waterworks into operating supplies for 1,005, uh, 588 for the insurance.
I would.
Oh, yeah.
And so you know, the hearing is coming up soon, the Public Utilities Commission for that. It's a sale. I think Terry beat you to it. All in favor?
No, they was looking around.
That's family.
I want to remember this amount.
Oh, 150,336,835.
Pay the bills.
All in. We do not have any executive sessions, so we will adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for being here and hearing today.